I'll be thinking of you. You're not involved in that? What is it? Let me know when you're done, hand me the new rules.
He decided he's not coming and no one told him to ask you.
And I'll proceed accordingly. I don't think this is gonna go really smoothly. This is not gonna be bad at all.
It's just a lot, first day of school, I don't get to see my kids when they come home, you know.
I think we'll be late.
I'm hoping they cut it off at nine instead of just let it go on my lawn.
You know, ordinance, sorry, I'll do the ordinance afterwards, I'm not going to. I heard on the stats like over my ears.
Um, we ready?
I'm ready. Alright, we're gonna start the meeting, everyone.
We're gonna, gentlemen, we're gonna start with SP twenty two-
Just looking at that, it's pretty cool.
SP twenty two fifty A A, which is congregation has on Ovadia. Um, it's a change of use site plan exemption to convert an existing house into a synagogue on Mark Drive. Um, we did just recently get fire commissioner reviews for all of the documents on today and they were all, you know, approved with no different concerns. Um, I don't have any notes regarding county planning board status.
They wouldn't have those on me, on the county.
And I haven't heard back from Shade Tree or Public Works on this yet.
You have the county of August sixteenth letter?
Yes.
Uh, I'm okay with scheduling, you guys are?
Um, we're looking at the October seventeenth public hearing with revised plans by September twenty first.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys need revised plans on this.
Okay.
Let's just go over what he wants to take.
I'll move through it.
I don't want to affect you, that way we can get our- I mean, if you wanna revise the plans, that's fine.
I'll fix it, let's fix it, let's take this a little bit, that way, that way, yeah.
Make resolution of plans a little bit.
Mine's when we have the time, we're not gonna be here by September twenty first.
What's the twenty first, is that?
Yeah.
You say twenty first, is that?
September twenty first, so we'll revise tonight.
Oh, okay. Just, yeah, that's just, in case we don't get these due on twenty first, we get on the twenty fifth, this is Rosh Hashanah, twenty second.
Twenty fifth, oh, you're right, it is.
So, not that if we don't-
What day of the week is the twenty fifth?
Monday, it's on Monday, right?
So, it's make all of them probably then.
Twenty fifth, that way, that way, because Rosh Hashanah, I mean, we're sort of openish, but that's, it's pretty standard style.
Just a, um-
We've, I'm, we've revised plans by September twenty first, so something to be in any comment. We'll just revise the plans every, in fact, there's no real, it is doing this.
I'm just looking at the zoning table, no variances.
Right, change of use for, for my house to a synagogue, no variances.
About to do that as a write.
Correct, yeah.
No variances, uh, this form does require numbers or does not require numbers?
Yes, they do, very little warning. Yeah, it looks like, you know, change, correct is no, and it's actually warning service, or intervention proposed.
Imagine do that, that way it gets perfect, we, we, the notice is the same, it's missed, that's after that, and it will be, well, yeah.
Does the shed stay, is that allowed? As, you're allowed to have an accessory building on the shed, or?
You, you'd have to, you'd have to apply for continuation variance to non-conformity conditions.
Is that noted in the letter?
We need the stores back.
What possible move?
It is noted in the letter, it's not noted as to how they're adjusting it.
Pre-existing design, not a full description.
If it's, I, I live out there, I'll check it out, if it's a real shed, we'll, we'll ask for the moving forward.
I'll see if it's a decent shed, just move.
Right, exactly.
So, so you're not, you're gonna revise the plans, you'll know.
We'll figure out what.
And, and, um, you're about to have accessory work, so.
Sure, yeah. Pretty tolerant of them, it's like, um-
In the event, in the event they wanted to keep it there, we're gonna have to notice for that, right?
Right, right.
What do you think?
Say it again?
In the event they wanted to keep the shed here, we're gonna have to notice.
Yeah, I, I, these days, I'm not the attorney, so I, I would notice, if there was a one percent chance, I had to notice, I noticed.
No, I agree, and it's probably a narrative to set back on an accessory structure.
Because you're changing the use, so with the change of use, you're not, your title, you're not performing necessarily, so.
Um, SP twenty two fifty one, which is a major site plan from Mr. Baylen. How do I say that?
Bailey.
Bale? Nope, I said Bale.
Hold on, Mr. Jackson. How are you, what are you?
Just wanna check. Let me just make my notes a little. Give me one second.
Do you guys have a copy of our August thirtieth letter?
I do.
We just got a letter from the fire commissioner indicating approval and no request for additional revisions or anything like that. I've never gotten from Shade Tree Commission, I believe they're not meeting lately because they haven't had a barn. And I haven't turned back from Public Works as of yet on servicing the site, though I assume it'll be similar to how we service.
What was the last one, Public Works? Just looking at the comments in our letter, the bottom of page two, under section one, on the submission review. Um, we're gonna resubmit, which I guess will be the September twenty fifth.
Don't expect them to know, we're, we're, September twenty seventh, given that, uh, gonna make the assumption that your office is not gonna be closed on Rosh Hashanah, and we'll have control to it by the twenty second.
Um, so give us revised check, we'll start on the file, the submission review, thank you.
On September twenty second?
Yes. Uh, yeah, the twenty first, I think, is the date I have on there for revised plans.
Oh.
Actually, that's just, because I thought that had to do with a minor subdivision.
That's, that should be all of them, that's, every application is that. Right, so, your plan review, got it, yeah, so your public hearing date is gonna be the seventeenth? We're looking for revised plans by the twenty second. I was originally looking at the twenty first, but given that it's Rosh Hashanah, this building may be closed, which is why they'll do the twenty second.
Um, continuing on the letter, you'll be seeking various immediate hearing, uh, as noted on the first page of our letter. As well as the need for parking sign variants, uh, and perimeter buffers, and the needed, uh, every design data comment three.
Can I stop you one second, your zoning table says ten thousand required for the zone, and Terry, you say twenty thousand?
Yeah, admittedly, mine is wrong, I used the zoning schedule, which, kind of the body of the zoning ordinance has the numbers.
The zoning schedule is often not updated.
But still, we were, uh, it's kind of before established zone that we're, so, I'll, I'll change the table, but I still think we want the setbacks that we're asking for, because that, you know.
Yeah, I don't, you're not going much further than what the building was before, correct?
Well, we're not, we're flipping it.
Okay.
We're flipping it, because the, uh, as the parking is right now, it's next to a, a market, international market.
International market.
And they, they come in and park there. So, if we, if we flip it, put it on the inside, it's much more likely that it's gonna be for our clients only.
I remember when Dave was looking over this, he was wondering where these requirements had come from, and we don't even think to check that chart, because it's often, in the body, there's other requirements.
Do you have an attorney on your case? Okay, you're not a corporation, this is your, for you individually?
Yes, sir.
Um, under the, Terry, since it's an undersized lot, do we have to do buy-sell letters? We don't get that too often, but you wanna develop what's basically vacant undersized lot, or it's been completely destroyed?
I've never seen where to require buy-sell letters.
I think, are both adjacent sites fully developed?
Yes. This is, I don't know if you know, John, this is a, uh, best liquor which burnt down.
That, that doesn't mean you don't have to do the buy-sell letters, though, because you don't, it's not only acquire, you also have to give them the opportunity to purchase your property fair market value.
Now, both, both adjacent properties have buildings on it.
Right, but I think you have to do a buy-sell letter.
Technically, you have to reach out to your neighbor and say, would you like to purchase my property?
At fair market value, with the approval.
Then assuming the neighbors say, no, we're not interested, you would submit that to the board as proof or in support of your undersized property being developed.
Okay.
It goes to the concept of hardship, if you're seeking a hardship variance, the hardship concept relates to your lot is undersized, so you wanna develop what's basically now a vacant undersized lot. So, um-
Well, the, the burn structure is still there.
It's, it's, it's-
Okay.
It's, it's substantially, I forget the word, I don't know if it's substantially, or, uh-
It's substantially gone.
It's destroyed, it's substantial, I'll, I'll use the word substantially, I don't know if that's what they're-
It was full of liquor and caught on fire, from what I understand, so it's, it's gone.
So, either, either way. Wow, that's a spectacular place.
It was, yeah.
Wow.
As the first police officer responded, it-
Plastic liquor bottles, probably all just melted and fed to flames.
Wow.
So, I, I'd never think of that as like a hazardous, you know, almost like an inflammable storage, but it is. Regardless, and that's why I want to know if you have an attorney, because I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, I'm not going to, you know, dig into it as if I would if I were representing an applicant, and I didn't wanna do it. To me, it's easier to just say, either you have to do it, or you have to show me why you don't have to do it. And there's a lot of nuance to those regulations, but, and that might only be for residential, not for commercial, I think it's called Dalmyer. Um, I don't have my Cox.
He had asked me about that, and I had said, given that he's an individual, I don't believe he's required to be represented.
It's not, it's not required.
No, he's not required.
As I said, I'm going through a lot of hardship, that is my only income, that is completely-
Are, are you aware of any potential objectors?
Well, someone might wanna grab that property, so. I, I, you know, if, if you call me, we'll, we'll work through it, and I'll look at it, and I'll double check it, because I'm a little foggy on all the nuances of that doctrine. But, I, I don't know if that's just for single-family homes, um, I don't know if, um-
There's a relatively new structure, uh, to the west, and there's an old-
What the, what the theory is, is the, you're supposed to push properties toward conformity, so kind of an isolated undersized lot, which I think this is now, since the, what was on there was destroyed. You have to see if the neighbors wanna suck it into their lot, or take it into their lot. And, and I know that applies on residential, I'm not sure if it applies, applies on commercial, and our ordinance might have exemptions from that, but I, I just, it doesn't come up too much, as Terry said.
Okay. Great, then just looking at the letter, um, the balance is technical comments, we have one comment on page four. Page four, remnant number four.
Okay.
Uh, plan review comment, one was involved, there appears to be a conflict, um, between a raised platform and an access, and an access door.
Yeah, I'll, we'll take care of that, what it is, is I've got, there's an, uh, an exit that's required architecturally, for, for exit requirements. And it's also, that space between the buildings carries drain, so all I'm doing is that, is having a raised step, so the water can go underneath.
When you, when you resubmit, and maybe they'll, they'll have a cover letter that explains that, and that way, you won't bring it up again like it did.
Okay.
Other than that, I saw your comments, so, I had a problem in terms of anything scheduled.
Just look at your architectural.
Last page.
I think, um-
What, what are you going to, what use, stay as a liquor store?
Uh, liquor store on first floor and offices on second floor.
Previously, there was only one story?
No, previously, there was two stories, had liquor store on the first floor, had two offices, uh, liquor store on the first floor and a convenience store, and second floor had two offices?
Two offices.
Two offices. So, we're getting rid of the convenience store, and liquor store's gonna take the entire first floor, and offices go upstairs.
And, um, how was your parking?
Parking was, uh, a parking variance is required, I came up with the calculation because of twenty five or twenty six, and we have fifteen. The engineer's letter comes up with a, uh, a higher requirement, because he's used everything as like a retail, I deducted areas that, where we're gonna keep liquor storage, I counted them towards storage, and put a parking requirement for storage.
That, maybe I'm not stating what I'm trying to say, which happens a lot, um, how, did you have a parking deficiency before? I know your square footage went better. What was your parking deficiency before?
I think it's almost, it was almost identical, based on my calculations, now, his, his calculations are more, I think he said I needed thirty five, is that what?
He has thirty seven listed.
And I think I had twenty six.
Are you changing, are you enlarging the building at all?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that, I would think would decrease your parking, because you're in the same footprint, right?
Increase the parking, but the, the old variance, the, the old, uh, site plan was based on a very, like a one-for-one-hundred requirement.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it was, it was really stripped last time. But, uh, you can ask Mr. Bailey, but he has no problem with, with parking, the, the main portion with parking is the adjacent people parking on his site, but what percentage is walk-in traffic to retail?
Because on the downtown area next to the railroad track, my walk-in customers are almost, about ninety percent. The landrum at across the street, the three landrumets that are across the street, they walk in, and then the, uh, international market, they walk in, so.
Guess you need a way to entertain yourself while you're walking, you know? But, okay, so, the retail, does, is the retail going to, it's not, not the retail, the office?
Right.
How, how much is, of the parking is based upon the office, though, Terry, what would the parking be, just for the office itself?
What do we have listed on that?
This is, this is listing forty six, about forty-six hundred, four-seven hundred square feet of office space at one per three hundred. And then, um, about four thousand four hundred of display space at one per two hundred. Now, I would imagine if the architecturals were adjusted to clarify what is storage and what is not, I, I believe, and Terry may correct me if I'm wrong, that, that often, this storage, especially in undeveloped basements and things of that nature, is not included in the parking calculation.
Correct, they, they, it's typically gross floor space.
Well, if you look on sheet one here, I have broken down the parking, and I've got the offices at thirty-five, ninety-three, uh, required eleven point nine eight, so essentially twelve parking spaces for the second floor. And we've got, uh, fourteen for the first floor.
So, the second floor, the offices need twelve spaces?
True.
And you provide, how many, twenty-five?
We have provided fifteen for the whole, whole site, and we show thirty-five, and my calculation shows twenty-six, we provided fifteen.
Regardless of the variance, it's just where the break of the calculation falls.
Well, no, I just wanna know how much more your parking demand is driven by the, uh, the office space, because that, to me, is, in this town, we're, we're likely to have the parking deficiency. If you have a nice new office, and you have a lot of square footage up there, people will park and work in, and that will, you know, that could cause a parking problem, where there wasn't. I agree with you, I don't think you're gonna have thirty-five cars lined up for a liquor store.
Is it intended to be rentable office space, or are you using it all for the liquor store use, just out of curiosity? Is it like your office, or you intend to let someone else use the space?
I would like to use one for the liquor store, and then the other, other ones I would like to rent.
They're shown as units, and you could always rent them out, so they're individual units, so.
The customer class is only less than two minutes, runs up to three to, two to seven minutes, come in, pick up your six pack, and they're welcome.
I think the user's gonna be in the office. Yeah, it's not up to us to scrutinize this, I just wanna alert you to be prepared to address the parking.
Yeah, we know that, yeah, uh, but he's, you know, the experience of people who's, who's had in there, he's never had a parking problem, he had two offices and a, uh, convenience store, in addition to liquor store.
You're changing what it is, I mean, you had kind of an older store, it really wasn't like a premium, I mean, this, this rendering shows a pretty nice, fucking building, and I'm out there to get tenants. And the tenants will get packed in there, and then people will be ready to park it, so, the board's very sensitive to parking, so just, you know, be prepared to address that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Benjamin, have I emailed you the file, you all need email, just, I can't recall.
I, I got the letter emailed today, yeah. It's on my title wall, so I need that, if you can.
So, we are looking at the October seventeenth public hearing, like I said, with plans by September twenty second. I'll send you a copy of my notes, which just this time, we need copies, plans I need, as well as a PDF version, so.
How many copies should we need?
It's gonna be six copies, as well as a PDF, but I'll email you this, that has that in front of it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good one. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Van Sauer, SP twenty two fifty-two?
You stay very good.
We did just get the fire commissioner's review, no issues, noted, um, submission later, request for the planning board, nothing from Shade Tree or Public Works at this time.
This is, yeah, this is not, this is not on County Road, so, I'm, I'm in the under.
It's a site plan, isn't a site plan required kind of thing, or do we have a basis?
No. I'm gonna be over in a third, that county drainage, again.
When we resubmit, dreadless, you're funded dreadless, you don't remember, and you'll win the trade, you know, and you think this is, uh, you're seeking a waiting for the traffic study?
No, we've, we actually requested, probably have this one and a few other traffic studies, we hired Scott Kenno about a month or two later, he didn't wanna do any counts until the school starts, or, or yell them, you're doing it in the summer time, so, we're doing it this week and next week.
We'll have something prior to the October.
I imagine, so, yeah, and then, yeah, and then other ones, you see the county planning board, until you have the traffic study, you can't see it on County, County Board, and of course, yeah.
Why do you wanna wait for architectural elevations?
It was done, it was, just wasn't done in time for the dis- dis submission.
Oh, I'm sorry, will it, will it, I don't feel like I have much, obviously, it's, it's not gonna work.
It was done, the architectures were done, the elevations were done, we'll have it through public hearing. We have designs on this, they said time and elevations, so they asked, we didn't have more time, so, before tech, tech review, it's not like the, the lady wants to see them. I'll email, I'll email to them, and then-
But we're supposed to see them before we reschedule.
We give you, we need revised plans as well, it'll come with the revised plans.
But they don't want us to schedule stuff until it's all, they don't wanna have to catch up with the agenda.
It doesn't get scheduled until I get that, for that September date we've been given. But if you wanna see them again before September.
Maybe, I haven't, you're giving a date.
We, we say that you're scheduled for October pending receipt of the plans by this date in September.
We need to get, Ally checks it over and makes sure that the elevations are here.
Everything has to be in by November September, so Ally gives the date now, pending that she gets all those materials, and if she doesn't, she announces them.
And put it on there, you can put it, quote out again on the letter, on your, your comments, so, it won't, it won't slip through.
I think the idea, we're, I'll talk to Ally about it, I mean, it's not really, that's the way we're doing, I think the idea is that we're supposed to be looking at it.
Before the technical period?
No, that's the whole purpose of this, for us to scrutinize them a little bit.
You're gonna scrutinize the elevations?
Well, the only thing that we're missing is the elevation.
Right, you have the, you have the architectural plans, you just don't have the elevation.
I'm gonna open it up, please.
Ally, you're done. Yeah, here.
So, we have a floor plan.
You have a floor?
Elevation's not-
We just didn't have, what the building, we didn't look for.
You don't have the exterior elevations.
The only thing I could think back to coming to plan would be like the height, but we don't, height, we're like, we're like-
We have to identify, we're being high, we only have sixty.
We have forty-five feet. Just calling out less than forty-five, we need four. What?
Ninety percent. If we need to-
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we're, it's, it's, three, three, first, second, third, so you have, you have the second, third, this, this floor, but three and forty-five is going to not.
This is the basement plant?
Mm-hmm.
So, the basement plant, the basement has a lobby?
Mm-hmm.
And the vestibule on two sides, that's just kind of a strange layout.
Yeah, this is, this is, um, they work a lot on these plans, that's what they want to do, so, it makes like a social meeting in the basement, and they wanna have, actually, look at the site plan, sorry.
Wait, let me, let me continue. So, this is really designed, and a kitchen?
Mm-hmm.
A six hundred square foot kitchen?
Mm-hmm.
What, what's that for?
For his, for social meetings, for social hall. Making a social hall in the basement, they're doing, first floor is a, is office suite, or first, second, third is office. Goal that is, is the evening times, the social hall be used, and during the day, the office building be used.
This doesn't look like any office building I ever saw before.
Completely.
Why, with a social meeting room, a six hundred square foot kitchen? And?
Okay, look at the lot, look at the site plan, so you'll understand a little bit of their identity.
What's here, do the men's rest, there's restroom, the office suite? Do a little office suite.
According to our calculations, you do require variance for reform part.
Because it's a social hall, but we're gonna go over there, we'll address that.
What's all this? Handicap ramps? To go down?
To a social hall.
Yeah.
If it's a social hall, we'd have to have handicap ramps.
And those ramps are outs, like, outside the building?
Yeah, the door thing, right?
Yeah, so it's fine, if you look at the site plan, you'll, you'll, okay, they could, they could change recently when you have to have- If you come down here, this is your plaza below.
Thirty percent change in capital.
Your main entrance from here, is that over here? So, your social hall going onto your meeting room, what are they called, social room down here is here.
So, it's like a hall you could rent out, for when you have communion, or you wanna do a baby shower, or something like that.
Yeah, it's a small hall.
Communion, right, I'll have my communion.
There you go. I'll tell Erin. Basically, here's your, here's your social hall, the kitchen is social, so.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's, that's, then that's a catering hall, that's not, are there different criteria for catering halls, I mean, or for a social room? I mean, that's-
Catering hall, I mean, the parking requirement is-
It's the same parking requirements, I don't think it's a difference.
Same, yeah.
We had identified, uh, in our calculations in our letter, we assumed one space of four hundred square feet gross floor area.
Yeah, I don't think your calculations are any different, it's the same thing, it's just-
Yeah, and, and, look, at the end of the day, the, the board's gonna have to be comfortable, it's not a parking problem.
It looks like there's a lot of parking, I never saw a parking lot like that, yeah.
We did do one.
How many spaces we have?
We did do one, we did do one, but three hundred.
You have fifty-eight shown, and we estimated seventy-one.
But also, the concept is that the social hall is not gonna be used, or the catering facility, whatever you wanna call it, it's not gonna be used during the same hours as the office space, so-
Listen to the board.
I'm just telling you what I imagine the concept is supposed to be.
There's no other variances on this, on this project, so if that would be a variance, that would be on that.
It's just, you know, for now, this is kind of a strange office layout.
What? These are both the suites, you come in, here's your hallway.
And you go upstairs to get the offices, or they agree?
No, no, great, no, this is, no, this one. You come in, you go upstairs, here's floor one.
Yeah.
So, here, you can cut this up, you can put your lobby, you can put your receptionist here, your offices are back here, you can cut this up, this is, this is just open, you don't, they'll fit it out, they'll fit it out, whatever, the customer sits out. This is very, this, that's typical, but the floor, these floors, the basement is different, and the grading, the way it's graded, it's graded down and up, it's, it's unique.
That's, that's basically how my office over at the tower was.
Six hundred square foot off?
No, no, you have big off, no, no, you have big office suites with, with a main hallway, and bathrooms out the hall. Everybody get their own private town, that's-
That's pretty difficult, yeah.
All right, the only other thing I have, looking further in my letter, uh, on page four, um, it shows that you potentially have category one buffer, and one of these on the other.
You've submitted the DEP?
Aline.
Aline.
Can you made a copy of what you've given them, so, so we have it, please?
I'm waiting to take back the-
And we can take that in lieu of the EIS.
Offices are permitted use, and catering halls are permitted use in a wholesale service on district?
Yes.
Mess, and Terry.
I would say it is, we would have identified if it was not, I can't tell you right now, but my understanding is yes. You'll verify that obviously prior to resubmission. Guys?
Yeah, is that the reason we're calling this a social hall, is because that's different?
No, it was, the goal of it was to be used during the day temporarily for, if you wanna, if you have an office meeting, you wanna hold it, doesn't fit in your conference room, please. No, it was, the goal of it was to be used during the daytime typically for, if you wanna, if you have an office meeting, you wanna hold it, doesn't fit in your conference room, please, that as well, sort of like common space for the building. So it was, be all, like a social hall and a, and a meeting room, can we use either one, is what we call that, that way? It's not a big building, so you may not have very large conference rooms, so if you wanna host a larger meeting, you have to go someplace.
And your notice will include the parking variance?
So I understand as well, yes.
Because it's, I mean, this letter's indicating seventy-one required, and it's fifty-eight provided, but I know Josh just mentioned, if a variance is required, it's the only variance, I just know you said if.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Are we tracking it differently?
I imagine we'll do again. We'll go over again, we'll revise the plans anyway. We're gonna revise the plans.
We know, we know, we know what Terry's got going, so.
Do we have a list of what's permitted in the wholesale service zone?
Not with me, I didn't bring the book down.
That's why.
You want me to go get the book?
It'd take a minute, right, it'll take a little bit of that, so we don't have any surprises.
Appleton actually, it's a residential in the south, trying to put the bottom building in the south, took it to the zoning board.
No.
It didn't go over, it didn't go over very well.
Bring it out of public hearing.
Uh, you only did, I wasn't there. It was, it was the night of my son's wedding, which is why I wasn't there.
I was from.
Did we ever go through the apartment? I thought, I thought we got to the point that.
No, actually, we never did, we pulled it, we never did, because it didn't go over very well.
It's firm, I'm sure.
Although, I have a hunch that I like the foundation, I believe it is.
See, that was part of it.
That's what I'm thinking.
That was a nice design, it was so nice that they, beautiful.
They didn't even let us, they didn't even let us present it.
There's a huge crowd there.
Right.
It was a gorgeous layout, it would look so nice.
What was the issue?
They don't want an apartment building, but I just think it would fit so much better than commercial, which is actually permitted.
The bulk, yeah, apartment would not.
No, apartments are used, but.
There's a lot of residential around the zone?
There's residential around, around us, but it's currently commercial use.
Right, it's currently commercial, it's a automotive repair.
Not the issue is what brings people out, is when it's residential, and, and this is quite big fuel.
Well, it is, this is, this is an area that if it's B four, and at one point, that whole part of Park Avenue was all commercial, it's mostly been turned over to residential, but most of the people that were complaining live a block or two away.
The plus the street is residential, you have the B four is here, and then right across is the R ten, so.
Right. But that's because there's railroad tracks behind this property, it was always, it was always, that's why it was zoned before, oh, yeah, because the railroad tracks are everywhere. Who would've thought that people would wanna live where they're, where the train kind of runs through the property, and probably shakes the house when it comes to it, right?
Every Thursday night, love it, every night.
I hear it in my house.
Every Thursday night, love it, every night, become the R ten.
You gotta wonder what it sounds like over there.
That's not that often, though, right?
No, it's like once a year, I think.
The shot there is the hearing. Why, it's twelfth by the lines, huh? The shot there is the noise.
So the B's all, um, the B zones, all, you do that backwards off of each other?
Right. Or B four? Yeah, I think it's similar to B three.
All right, so B four.
B four wholesale.
Yeah, so it's these uses, plus everything in the B three.
So it's not specifically listed here, here, dial back.
Yeah, I don't see anything about catering.
Let's try B three.
There's healthcare. Okay, plus everything in the B one.
Someone was at a conference room.
Ramro, please.
B one, retail.
Start the check. Offices, restaurants.
Services. How are we gonna cut that?
Yeah.
It's a wonderful restaurant.
I like how they list offices, restaurants, and similar services in the same, offices and restaurants.
I don't know, but we do, we do.
That seems to be exactly what this is doing.
Are, are catering halls listed in a, uh?
Uh, there are specific parking requirements for catering halls, but that may be specific, I, I think that's in where they're talking about shools that also have a catering hall. See what I got?
And catering facility was never defined as a use, probably should be, maybe, but I don't think it was to date.
Well, I think a catering hall is more than a restaurant.
Oh, wait, that's, I would say, wow.
It really is, because it's got a kitchen and a dining area.
Okay.
It's not, it's not listed with its own definition, so, yeah.
Four, it's a similar use.
And it's a similar use.
Just put in your notice, that, I don't think it's fair to call it, and you notice that that's a social cabin, or whatever you call it. You know, that, that, that's a restaurant, it's a restaurant use, or.
I don't know if you wanna call it a restaurant.
Just because it has a kitchen, doesn't mean there's gonna be staff down there.
It has a six hundred square foot kitchen, and the whole thing involves.
I mean, he wants us to call it a catering facility, but.
It is some kind of a restaurant.
Six hundred square feet big.
And if, and if you're trying to go to under the permitted use.
John, six hundred square feet is not, six hundred square feet is not big.
That's like a, that's like.
It's a little bigger than my kitchen.
How big do you think this room is?
A lot bigger than sixteen square feet.
No, this is about six hundred square feet.
Twenty, but if you think twenty by twenty kitchen, I mean, it sounds normal to me, isn't it, a nice twenty by twenty, that's four hundred, right? Yeah.
Twenty-five by, how big do you think this is?
I don't think we should be calling it a restaurant, it's not a restaurant.
This room is six hundred thirty.
No, I wouldn't call it, we call it a social meeting room, that's what we called it.
Yeah, but John doesn't like that.
I wouldn't call it a restaurant, it's not a restaurant.
I guess that's why, I guess that's why Dave said one per four, I don't know.
Twenty by thirty is six hundred square feet, this room is about twenty by thirty.
It's a conference room with a kitchen.
Twenty-five by thirty? Twenty-five by twenty by thirty, six hundred, this is about twenty by thirty. I know, because I have a six hundred square foot room, and it's about this big, that's how I'd. Put it down, twenty by thirty? This is six hundred square feet? So my, this is a big room.
Having a restaurant, six hundred square feet, it's taken up really, really fast.
He has restaurants.
It's not a restaurant.
No, no, I'm just.
You can't call it a restaurant, they, people can't come there and get a sandwich, it's not a restaurant.
This, this is, this is like a certain's issue is, what are you calling? This is like a, this is, this is really like a service kitchen.
I'm just, Dave used one per four hundred for the basement, and I don't know where that came from.
I mean, I'd say a conference room and a kitchen.
Why don't we, why don't we?
That's what he's calling it, he's saying it's a big conference room that you could use for meetings during the day, there is a kitchen, and there's a conference room and a kitchen facility in the basement. I mean, they can draw whatever inferences they want from that, I can't call it, it's not a restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, the last place I worked at had a large kitchen, and a conference room attached, but it wasn't.
It's a conference room.
I don't, I feel like a restaurant may be overkill.
It's not, it's not, it will not be open for outside digits to walk in, and just, here, I'm here, I'm here for dinner, it definitely will not, it will not be open like that.
I mean, if I notice for it as a conference room and a kitchen, the neighbors are gonna assume it's a catering hall.
Right.
I mean.
That's what my point is.
I understand, I, I, I would, I would call it a catering hall, but I have a bad feeling that.
Why is it a social room? Why is wrong with a social room, is the social room cover all that? Social is not a meeting room, I, so I thought.
I don't know, social, social is really great.
A social hall.
And it's a social hall to me, sounds like a big open space with a, you know, a self-serve bar.
I mean, it sounds like a catering hall, in a synagogue or, in a synagogue or church, is what a social hall sounds like, it's the same.
I just think that's disproportionate, when I look at what's going on downstairs with the six hundred square foot, with three entrances, with two bathrooms, two vestibules, and then two little offices upstairs, it just seems out of proportion, I don't know what it is.
There's not two little offices upstairs, there's, there's three floors of offices each.
There's three floors, that's what, two?
One of those says second and third floors.
Second, third, yeah, first, second, third, first, second, you have three, you have a real office building.
No, there's three floors. There's three floors plus a basement, it's four floors.
And each floor has fifty-seven hundred square feet, so you have fifteen thousand square feet of office, or more, you have sixteen thousand square feet of office in total, so it's not a, you know.
It's not crazy, it's a big, it's a big conference room, with, it's a conference room.
You know, under, under the M L U L, you have to give a fair, um, indication of what the use is.
Agreed.
You know, if it's a restaurant, you gotta call it a restaurant, if it's a shopping center, you gotta call it a shopping center, and that's, uh.
I think that's what they're doing.
That, that's.
I mean, as far as what the applicant's saying, I, I, he.
But I think to call it a social room is misleading.
I don't think, no, I don't think it should be called a social room either, because.
Could you call it a meeting room slash sim hall, does that make everyone?
No, a sim hall is not a technical term, if you wanna call it a catering hall, you can call it a catering hall, but I have a feeling the neighbors are gonna come and challenge jurisdiction, and say that it's, that it needs a use variance, because there's no place in the ordinance that it actually says that a catering hall is permissible, which is the reason.
That's true, guys are asking how the field is.
Of course he's gonna have a field day, that's the only reason I'm reluctant to do it, I have no problem calling it a catering hall, but the ordinance doesn't permit catering halls.
Don't you understand that's why I'm bringing this up?
I'm on the same page with you, I am, I am, so I, I said it's a conference room and a kitchen, it's an office building, and office building has a conference room and a kitchen, now, I suspect the neighbors are still gonna hire Gazarewski, because they hired Gazarewski the last time, and Gazarewski's still gonna say it's a catering facility, because that's what they're gonna tell him it is, but, then we'll deal with it, I think if we say it's a conference room, and we'll put, how many square feet is that?
The only nice thing about calling it a social hall as well, is social halls are sometimes rented to outsiders, if you call it a conference room, it's not rented to outsiders.
Then you don't realize they're gonna be using it in the evening.
A social hall allows it to be rented to outsiders.
But the problem is, that's also a pretext type of thing, to say we're not going to rent it to outsiders, and then they will.
But they will, I'm not to stop them, they will.
That's designed, you know.
We're not saying that, and John, we know who the neighbors are, the neighbors are nuts, so I think we can call it a conference, and we can call it a, how many is it, twenty-eight, how many is it?
Twenty-eight, thirty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thirty-eight square foot conference room, and how big's the kitchen? Six hundred square feet, is that what we said? And six hundred six square foot.
I mean, look, that's intended to be busy, look at the bathroom, there's five sinks in each bathroom, on the ground floor.
These are, what they're gonna build, they're gonna be five sinks, it'll be three sinks, it'll be six sinks.
Well, okay, did I count them wrong?
Yeah, there's two in the bathroom, and then there's three sinks on each side in the hall. So if you have a wedding, there's three sinks for the wedding, three sinks for the.
We're not, we're not having a wedding there, just a little bit of ideas.
Twenty on small.
Maybe Ally's wedding, but, it's not gonna fit in any Jewish wedding.
If you're gonna.
Okay, that's just, it just strikes me as.
If you hold a small event there.
John, I'm gonna say that it's a twenty-eight, twenty-eight, thirty-eight square foot conference room, and a six hundred six square foot kitchen, I mean, that says what it is.
It's like the size of like a, you know, like a.
Very low, it's a commercial.
Elks club or something, or even smaller than that, you know?
Twenty-eight hundred square feet is, is a decent size.
No, an Elks club is a good, is a, is a, is a good parallel.
And it's twenty-eight hundred square feet of the room, then it's got a six hundred square foot kitchen, and then it has two bathrooms and two vestibules, and, uh, it's, the whole square footage of all things is pretty big.
So now, if we're considering a catering hall, the only place catering hall is mentioned is under shools, and it says the parking requirement for catering halls is one parking space for every hundred square feet, so, we're only calculated at one per four hundred, so your parking variance may be even bigger.
The only thing is. Number one, and, and that's, that. That's number one, and, and number two.
That's the, in addition to, you know.
In addition to the mikfus, or, in addition to the sanctuary.
Uh, Gazarewski's gonna come up with a jurisdictional issue, he's gonna say that a catering hall is not permitted in any zone.
You have to work it out among yourselves.
Therefore, he's gonna come back and say.
We're gonna have to work out exactly what we wanna call this, and we have to perish back and clear, and open up exactly what it is, and make it work, finished.
But we have to be comfortable with it, the notice that goes out fairly apprises the neighbors of what it is, and that the board understands what the issues are, so I don't know what you call this, I would call it.
I mean, for now, I'm looking at doing a conference room and a kitchen, um, which I think will say what it is, and I think.
But I don't think that's what it is in any way, shape, or form, you have two bathrooms, two, and, three entryways, it's, it's.
Well, it is, it is a conference room, it's just it may be used in the evenings for, I don't know what.
A restaurant.
Not a restaurant, not a restaurant, an engagement party.
A catering hall. For weddings.
Right.
But that's a catering.
Like, you know, like, they don't have, you know.
If it's, if it's, if it's for a party, that's a catering hall.
It's not a restaurant.
If you have parties.
Right.
Well, it's not a restaurant.
It's not like you have a Realtor, and all the agents go down there to talk about what houses they're listing, and they have, you know, coffee and donuts.
Well, they could.
But we could set it up like this, and they could be a big, there could be a big conference table.
That's not what it is.
If you wanna have real good meetings.
It's not what it is.
Well, they can have holiday parties there.
They're not building this to have holiday parties. That's a, that's.
Well, they may do that also, actually.
D U M B.
Okay, we got it.
So, will it tentatively schedule, assuming you confirm your.
Yeah, send me the notice when you send it, I just wanna see what the notice says, and I, I really would recommend that you identify it for what it is, which is some kind of a catering facility. And you know what, if that's what you get approval for, then that makes it a lot easier down the road, too.
Can, can the board hear it, do you?
I'm not sure, right.
Well, I think, you can't, because I think it's a restaurant, put restaurant.
But that, that brings into question the part.
In my mind, if you serve, if you serve food and drink for money, that's a restaurant.
So for, for argument's sake, do they advertise as restaurants strictly for uses catering?
Well, that's, that's a type of restaurant, catering is a type of restaurant.
But.
Because all ordinance doesn't.
Either it's approved, or it's not, that's what I'm getting at.
I know we have tons and tons of catering halls in Lincoln, and it surprises me that there's no use for it, that this has a catering.
Well, that's what I said before, I said that before.
They have to come up with something.
So, to me, that means the ordinance means a restaurant, because it's all that's, all that you have to call it. Just like if you, if you have a very large, you have, where's that place we've gone from, you have a very big pizza place, if you need it now, that becomes catering hall, then.
It's different, though, if you have a whole staff of people serving the restaurant, that are there for the restaurant, and you take walking.
Well, that's it, that's if the ordinance wants, if the ordinance wants to further define the use that way, yes, because I agree, like, a banquet hall, why do you place is different than a residential restaurant?
Banket hall would be another good time, yeah, like.
But a lot of rest, like, look at Winkleman's, I both, I don't know if you remember the fact that, or, or, or.
They did, they would get drums and stuff back there, but I don't, but I know what you mean.
But wasn't there one that got approved with a sinkable, it was like the Zondel?
Well, well, you know what I mean, like an Elks club, I wouldn't consider that a restaurant, but it's definitely a catering hall or a banquet hall, it's hall, it's social hall, like, they all understood the intent of that.
Well, that's probably called a party club or something, I don't know.
So we'll have to work it out.
Maybe we can talk about that tonight at the masterclass.
They should add, even once they're doing, they should add dorms as well, dormitories, there's nothing, there's no dorms anywhere.
All right, we're going on the cap, I'm sorry, brought that up.
But you should sign no dorms in catering halls.
It makes our lives easier to have ordinance that's written that clearly.
I, I agree. Just send me the notice, and we'll talk about it, I, I, we have to think about it.
We're gonna email the applicants, and we will definitely discuss it.
I, I just think it has to have something that lets people know there might be fifty, sixty people there, seventy-five, a hundred people at once, for a party, which is what it looks like to me. How many people could fit in twenty-eight hundred square feet by an occupancy load, this, a six hundred square feet, you need fifty for this room, so, you're three, four times, you have a hundred and fifty people in there by fire load. Two hundred. Two hundred people show up for a banquet.
I, I've tried to figure that out, and I've never, based on how wide the doors.
Right, it's a lot of variables, but, you know, we agreed this room's six hundred square feet, it has fifty occupancy, it has one door, that has three doors. This, this what you have, has three doors.
That's true.
All right.
No, I'm just saying, because they go, they go by how wide.
So I'm just going, you know, very, grossly, it's gonna hold up to where people.
That is like forty years ago, and it's a township, it's like.
People have gotten smaller since then, so.
No, they haven't.
That stops.
All right, October seventeen, September twenty-fifth for plans.
Figured it out.
Did you get your?
Yes.
We are.
I got it.
Esther Dahlia Khan, next?
Yes.
Asian western issue. No catering halls, right?
This one, no.
Okay, I'll cater. This is a wire stub?
Great. Essentially just moving a lot line. And then creating two, uh, conforming blocks, four lots.
I go, you submitted it to law, it's the county planning board, you submitted it to county planning board, I don't know if you got anything back yet?
This is Esther Dahlia Khan, responding to.
Side setback variance, I heard you just say the word conforming, that's why I'm questioning, it says side setback variance?
Uh, conforming area, we do require a side setback.
Okay. Um, existing accessory structures will be properly labeled in the future, Esther, what's happening?
Um, yeah.
For something needed a variance for not being removed, or we're looking.
I'm assuming you're speaking of the, the frame shed next to the house on Omni?
Uh, that's what it looks like, yes.
Yeah, we can identify that, and I think we're gonna request the variance, uh, there's no changes going on on this guy's lot, he's just gaining some additional land. Yeah, we can identify that and I think we're gonna request the variance, uh, there's no changes going on on this guy's lot, he's just gaining some additional land.
I just identified that when you raised it and put it in front of there, please.
Who's Esther Dahlia Khan?
What's that?
Who's Esther Dahlia Khan?
Uh, no idea.
Someone financially benefiting from this, who's not familiar with the process.
They're the owner of lot seventy, I believe.
Is there an attorney on this job?
Um, no, not yet. There, there will be at the time of public hearing.
Either an attorney or the applicant present?
Well, it's LLC.
Is it an LLC?
One of the, two of the owners are LLC.
Oh, Esther Dahlia Khan is not a name?
She is a name.
She is a name. Cypress Management owns lot six.
Oh.
Sylvan Investments owns lot seven.
So, yeah, this has been cut. Is there, are there contracts? How, do you know how she has the right to develop all these other properties?
Uh, I don't. I believe we submitted owner's affidavits. Justifying the, uh, technicality. And their acknowledgement.
Who's like in charge, who's the person that you're, you're working with, who's like the?
Next gen.
Next gen, who's that?
Abadi.
Hi, Abadi. It looks like Esther Khan owns lot six and seven, and Michael Khan owns three point twenty-two. And we're missing seventy, let me see if I got that.
Sylvan Investments. On the affidavit.
You have an affidavit?
I want.
Hey, it's on the, on the application.
Sylvan Investments LLC. Sylvan LLC requires an attorney?
Yes. I think you also.
If they're an owner, is it, if the applicant's an individual, is this still required?
Yeah, but it, it just strikes me as odd that one person will be developing four lots. I mean, they're not just a. There's four lots being cobbled together and it's not just, I assume that's a her.
I believe so, right.
And it just. I, I don't know. This doesn't really tell us who owns it, or who's behind it, or who the parties are involved in, or what LLCs are. And I, I think the exemption for not needing an attorney when you're just an individual, it's usually not this complex.
It looks like I noted that we needed an affidavit of ownership for lot seven, and I have it listed as outstanding. I probably have an email with the bodies asking for it, or explaining why I don't have it, or saying that it's coming, or here's a copy of a contract, but I don't have it in my file at this time. So I added it to my notes.
You know, and I also, I mean.
We'll try that day.
Without any disrespect, it's just like, you know, it sends a kind of a signal to me when the engineer comes in, doesn't know who Esther is, or what she looks like, has never met, never talked to her. No, I mean, it's just, I, I think it's fair to know who actually is making the application and under what authority for the whole group. And that's why they should be represented by an attorney, I think. I don't think this is just a simple little.
Agree with that. I mean, but my not having knowledge of a particular applicant, I mean, doesn't really have anything binding about my engineering.
No, but, and you did say who's calling the shots, so it's.
Right.
It's fair enough. And, and that's not unusual for that person to have applications here.
Yeah.
He's probably the, the general of the whole thing.
Yes.
Or the, the actual developer. But that should be in here, too, somehow. Okay, going with the technical part.
The, I didn't buy either, including the side yard and the accessory structures.
Yep.
Uh, Joe, you have a copy of our technical comments. I assume you don't have any major issues?
No major issues.
When do you want revised plans on the twenty-second?
Yeah, can we do Friday the twenty-second? Does that work for you?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, that staggers a little bit that way. If some of the lines aren't coming until Monday, at least I'll get some of the others on Friday and process them as they come in, so.
We submit nine twenty-two and then what, what will be?
October seventeenth.
Um, and I'm assuming that affidavit?
Yes, affidavit as well.
Okay.
You don't need any variances for that?
Yeah, we had to have the letters, the side yard.
Side yard setback for the duplex units.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
It's twenty-three, seven, our manager, I made a second bill, it's a lot. Uh, it looks like you also submitted in the lot, county planning board, status is still unresolved, but it was submitted by permissioner, no concerns. As, um, August thirty-first, nothing from Shain's Public Works, yeah.
Okay.
Now, this one, we do have some concerns, isn't that in the final letter? Uh, it looks like this is using land that was formally allocated to the adjacent shopping plaza.
Correct.
So that same comment carries through in our letter.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to have to show that both end of these can function. And if relief is necessary on either end, if what you're doing frees conditions where you now require relief on this. Then that's gonna have to be part of the application as well.
And we, we have indicated that. I do, uh, I, I would agree, we'd have to notice for all three lots. And the parking does affect, uh, lot six, I think that's the lot in question. We're not showing particular improvements here because we're not changing anything there. Uh, we do provide a parking calculation that incorporates the entirety of Cross, uh, Cross Mill, four and six. Demonstrating that we are compliant with the parking requirement.
What you may wanna do in this, Joe, is do a detailed application letter explaining this.
Okay.
Explaining what we're doing, explaining what the impacts are on, on, on this adjacent facility. Any relief that's either necessary for this or for this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and have that. Uh, we also have my letter, uh, requesting, uh, Avant Topo for lot six. Uh, as well as, um, an updated stormwater report and, uh, kind of.
And that, that's kind of the point of the concern, is the Avant Topo lot six, although we're not doing it in there. And we're demonstrating any relief that could be brought up as parking, but there's no improvements going on in that lot.
What is the use on lot six?
It's Cross River Mall, it's, uh, shopping center.
So now, lot six isn't formally part of the application paperwork, um, possibly even.
Well, that was.
That's the question, John. I know in the past where we've had a subdivision that took a piece from an existing functioning site plan, we require a new site plan.
It's an amended site plan.
Which affects, all of the paperwork needs to be updated to include that additional lot. You know, the ownership paperwork, the application, restricted ownership of that hand if there's any LLCs involved. Uh, any taxes current, the plan should be updated to include that. We may not need a full actual site plan, but it's gonna be, need to be referenced, I imagine, in the notice as the subdivision, as well as the site.
We request submission.
Is it a separate amended type one application?
No, we, we tend to.
That's what it sounded like from the letter.
Well, we tend to.
It is, because you're amending the site plan for lot, lot six, because you're taking air, lot area away, and you're also flowing the traffic through.
So they were identified as an owner and, and signed affidavit for lot four, but we're actually amending the site plan on lot four and six.
So, for my purposes, I don't mind keeping it all grouped under the same number and in the same file, but if you do need additional dock.
I don't understand this. This is lot six over here, right?
Correct.
What's this?
That's lot four.
Is lot four part of your plan? No.
Four, six.
This is four.
Four and six, so.
This is six.
Correct, correct. So Cross River is actually bisected and half.
But, yeah, it looks like this also affects this. Lot four is affected.
We have to see all of.
Lot four's affected, we've indicated that on the plans, we are adjusting some of the parking, uh, we're compliant with the parking categories. We've identified that, yes, we are affecting lot four.
So what is on lot six?
The rest of Cross River Mall.
And you didn't even show it.
Correct.
And what are all these paths? Are these walk, walkways?
Yeah. It's a little shopping village, it's got some elevation to it.
Okay, so there's buildings like this along here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that definitely is four and five. Four and six definitely need amended site plans.
So you'd have to show six on this plan?
Correct. So the question becomes, do we need to do full topography on lot six if we're not doing anything there?
Well, I think you could ask for a waiver if you could convince Terry that you're not doing any violence to the drainage and.
Ask for the waiver. Hopefully there'll be no violence to anything. Ask for the waiver, if we feel that we need topographic information, we may come back and say, give us a D and C as full, as opposed to in full-blown survey.
You're just mildly tweaking the, the property line.
We're tweaking the property, yeah, we're cutting off, so if you look at the existing conditions. Right now, there's this tail that comes off of lot four that comes down here.
And what's in there now?
So in there now is parking.
The lot four?
The parking standard for Cross Rivers, uh, they are in substantial knockdowns, they're well over what they need for parking.
Wait, let's, let's look it up there right now. What's the address of this?
Oh, but their access is also, excuse me, will come over there.
There's an access coming very well. If you're familiar with this, this becomes more of a nuisance than anything. There's all dilapidated cars and things parked back here.
Because they don't really need it.
What's the, uh, street of this?
This is thirty-seven Cross, the center, center mall.
No, but what's Cross River Mills?
Well, if he looks, I think he's trying to look at it.
Aerial.
Oh, why don't you look at this?
That'll be easier.
So where are we? So here's Cross River, the whole mall. We got this strip of park and it comes down here.
It looks empty in the picture.
Yeah, the cars that are parked down here.
There's not a car in the whole picture.
Yeah, any cars that are down here are dead and on blocks, typically. At least anytime I've been out there, I've never seen everybody actually park there, who's using Cross River.
What you may wanna do, in all seriousness, is bring those for a public hearing.
Yep.
To help make the case.
Where is the, where is lot six on this?
Uh, well, lot, lot, yeah, so lot six is this half of Cross River, lot four is this half of Cross River.
Okay, and they, both of these use all that park.
They don't use it. They, it's part, it's part of lot four, but the point is that they don't use it.
Part of what they'll have to do, John, is make the case that this is not necessary, because it's not gonna be here if, if this is developed.
We're demonstrating that we meet the parking requirements for Cross River, deleting that and adding.
How did that happen? You have a shopping center with more than enough parking? How do we?
In Lakewood, I know, it's an anomaly.
News out of luck.
How did that happen?
So the issue is, is this new development's gonna come out almost in the same place, but it's gonna be counted, so you're gonna get the same neighbors complaining about the backup at night.
Oh, yeah.
It's office, yeah, it's not a shopping center, by the way. Glenn Harrison's office is there, once you knew where Glenn is.
Yeah, it's an office park, there's a diner in there, but the rest of it's mostly offices.
It's really offices.
Okay. Catering hall. All right, now, um. And this is really tearing on me, the incrementing the site plan, all this drainage and all this. Which way does the water go? Does it go back to here?
So we are, that, we've accounted for that, we, we understand that as an issue, so our, our design.
Just show me, though, where's the, which way does it flow?
Everything flows this way.
Okay, so you're, you're taking the water from the rest of the site onto here now?
Correct. All the water from the site goes to here now, it's gonna go in there in the future. We're proposing a new drainage system right here.
That sounds like violence to me to the site plan.
On lot four, I agree, but we're not touching lot six.
It might be violent, it's into compliance review, they get approval.
Are lot four's coming, don't you think?
I would imagine.
Why are they not consolidating? Why are they?
Right, I'm wondering the same thing. Why do they have two lots if it's one, it's one site, right?
They're conforming lots in the HD seven, uh, and they're, the property line doesn't go through any building.
It doesn't?
No.
You would think originally, when it was approved as a site plan, they would have required the consolidation, and somebody probably just missed that requirement.
And I guess.
That might be one of the conditions of approval, that they have to consolidate those two lots.
Well, especially if these guys, if this lot is losing that access over there, you're landlocking this lot, so I would imagine it's gonna happen.
No, they each have an access. He has an access to Route Nine right here.
Oh, he's always on Route Nine.
He has an access to Cross Street right here.
Got it. Okay.
They have an access to Cross.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't have to speak to my client, but he might, obviously, there's some financing benefits to possibly having these financed separately.
But are there, Joe, are there buildings on lot six?
Yeah.
So the other half of the buildings, it's totally bizarre, totally bizarre.
Yeah, but if they're, if all their drainage and their circulation and parking is all entangled.
It's totally bizarre.
That should be in one lot.
Or we could do cross-access, uh.
Something like that.
Easements to, to.
Exactly, provided, which is hence why we have the site plan requirement, since we're effective.
Guys, it looks like you've got a little bit of homework to do in this. I'm gonna recommend that you not be on the October meeting, I think it's a little aggressive.
Okay. If we can go through, there was another comment in your view that we. Yeah, in the jurisdictional issue.
Why?
That's in section two.
Uh, you notes do not mean that the conditional use requirement regarding track boundary, I, I do remember being very.
So the conditional use standards apply to the two-family. I don't believe it applies, is it townhouse a permitted use in HD seven?
Well, I think.
He says townhouses are a conditional use, so we probably have to check it. He says two-family dwellings are defined. The eighty dash ten ten eight three of your D R are also a conditional.
Conditional use is hospitals, townhouses, two-family dwellings.
So they're all conditional uses, so then you have to look at the drainage.
You have to meet the conditions or you don't get the value for it. You can't meet the conditions.
Yeah.
That's how that works.
He's saying that you're only seven feet from the.
Yeah, I seem to remember getting variances like that from the planning board, though. Was there a, a line item in there?
I somehow misplaced your.
It says, um, in addition to the conditional use standards provided in the back, which are regarding lot size and all that.
Yeah.
It appears to be a conditional.
Any residential use permitted as a conditional use in HD seven zones south shall be subject to the following. For that portion of South, uh, Route Nine, South of Central Avenue. Property line and boundary of any residential yard of a residential use or building shall be two hundred feet or more from the right-of-way boundary of Route Nine.
No, but that's not the issue, that he's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just assumed.
That I think we're good. He's saying that we're supposed to be twenty feet.
Twenty feet from the track.
From the track boundary.
But I seem to recall getting that variance from the planning board in the past. I thought there was some language.
You may have gotten it, but not as a conditional use.
Yeah.
If, if it's a standard bulk varies, that's something to get.
If it's a conditional use, you meet the conditions or you don't meet the limits.
I agree.
If, if it's a conditional use standard, then they're right.
Then, yeah.
I wanna make sure I explain to me. A track boundary, I, I don't get that.
I would say that's the boundary of, the outbound, the outbound of the whole tract.
Right.
That's residential, so I would say it's.
Of the initial tract or the tract as you're creating?
Uh, the tract that we're creating, I mean.
We're creating, so that, and what's the condition, the tract's down.
But of the entire tract, not the individual block.
Twenty-foot setback is one of the conditions of the conditional use.
Okay, so another way to put it is the site must be twenty feet from.
Your buildings must be twenty feet from the track boundary.
Internally, we're not required to have twenty-foot setbacks.
In those zone districts.
You probably got variances for individual lots.
Yeah.
You probably got bulk varies, which is important.
That you can get, bulk areas we, but if, if that's a conditional use, which Hallie hasn't read it yet, but.
In those zone districts in which townhouses are permitted conditional use, townhouse developments shall be subject to the following conditions. Two, track boundaries from a state highway, one hundred feet, from all other right-of-way lines, twenty feet. From all other property lines, twenty feet. You're not far enough from everything else, I guess, for the track.
The track boundary appears to be the issue.
Right.
Take a look at it, it may require zoning board approval.
We probably should have discussed this before we spent so much time on the, on the site plan.
Terry's still zoning board engineer, we'd still have that concern.
What, can you fix that, or does that look like something that's.
It's substantial amount, we need to fix.
Yeah, we can fix it, I think it's got it.
Yeah.
We're losing a lot of minutes.
Yeah. If we have to leave it, yeah, we need to leave it.
Yeah, but we're seven feet, you gotta be twenty, which is, and you've got, and you've got a few of them that are affected.
Well, yeah, if we're losing twenty-one feet in here, twenty-one feet in here, these we could make a townhouse and, and make comply. It's, these become the two-foot track.
But it also says you need to be hundred feet from state highway lines, that's just overlook that?
No, we probably are.
Two hundred ninety feet.
We are, because we have Cross River Mills over here.
Oh, I'm looking at Cross Street.
No, that's Cross, so I'm like, no, we're definitely far enough to be nine, I don't think that's a problem.
It may take a little time, so.
Sure.
Yep, it depends on what.
So I'm not gonna schedule for anything at this point, and you'll let me know.
So this will have to come back for another technical review?
I would imagine so, once you get the site plan. I would imagine so, once you get the site plan issued and the jurisdictions that go, yeah.
Well, if it stays.
If it stays the planning, we don't change the plans. If, if there's some caveat in the ordinance that I highly doubt if we.
Sure. Yep, then we can skip this.
We can skip that stuff and, and we'll go.
Thank you all. Mm-hmm. Uh, SP twenty-two eight, those are called in.
Thanks, Ron.
One less application for the things we're worried about right now.
Glad we can be observed.
Easy for you to say.
They just got to get through like twenty of them in the end of September and then we're in good shape. Fire commissioner approved, nothing from shape through your public works at this point. County planning board submission waiver requested, I assume, because you submitted later.
Who's that?
County planning boards, submission waiver requested.
Same problem with the, with the traffic report.
Oh, you need the traffic report to submit to that.
If we do a traffic report now, the county's going to scream at us. So we can't, we really can't submit to the traffic. We have no problem submitting it. You're going to get it to us probably. It's just no point, yeah. And we'll, we'll get it to you soon.
So you're going to give us a traffic study? Okay, you haven't given me any, if you have given what most information that the sites were invested in.
Yes, yes.
And there's no weapons or problems.
We've already done the first thing. We, this has been, we, we come in once before.
Yeah.
Where we, where we were using the existing paper streets so we could develop those. We're going to look alleyway in the back, so. If you don't have it in your file, which you probably do, we, we have done all that stuff the first time. This is kind of what we've been working out with, with Harrigay as far as, you know, access onto Locust Street. I understand where they had it. I'm not the first time they had some concern about us developing every green terrace or every boulevard. But at some point, you know, we end up with this third fair, and we're right in, we're separate, right in the drive. So this is existing map. So we, now we're developing, you know, basically two and a half blocks with the pinker streets. And Harrigay, who do you own?
We own lot thirty.
They own lot thirty, this quarter. So they're, they're party to the application.
Um, you're not providing.
Are you with the applicant or are you with John?
Yeah, we were, well, sort of.
Sort of.
Sort of. Okay. I'm not paying attention.
We've, we've been working with them for months. They're really very good.
Okay.
Um.
So they need your consent for everything because you've signed them a part of the property that they're using.
Right.
So applicants.
And we are, at this point, trying to work out one last issue about the landscaping.
And, uh, Locust Holdings LLC, the applicant will have a separate attorney? Or are you representing everyone after you?
Well, not me, just, just us.
Just Locust.
Yeah, no, we're, uh, forgettable.
Adam Peck.
There you go.
Okay. Looks like you need decent amount of variances.
Uh, we're, yes, because, actually, a lot of the variances come about because we've got these reverse frontage lots.
Oh, right.
And, you know, you end up in the zone, uh, which is, uh, which is B five, B five A. We end up with the front set, you know, some, some front yard setbacks that just, you know. If they were, if this wasn't a street, these would be reers and it would be no problem.
Right.
So we do that and, yeah.
You're going to make your case on the variances. Uh, the only concern that we have if we go past zoning, one of our review comments on page five was proof that you're not exceeding the maximum allowed density. And obviously, if that proof can't be made, then that maybe is only variances.
Not maybe. How, how do you mean?
No, no, that's a, yeah, no, that's, that's definitely one or the other.
How do you mean the density? What is the density and what?
We identified seventeen units per acre.
You extrapolate that?
Uh, no, it's specific, isn't it?
I believe we.
Yeah. The application has been revised, except density, which will be limited to seventeen units an acre. So either, uh, the unit count has to meet that requirement or it goes to zoning.
So what is the unit count per acre? What do we have, like two or three acres here?
We identify what we have here. Existing property, Locust Street. I don't know if we have identified a little piece of the. Uh, we're.
I don't know if these are all added up as a total. They're in the here, all these different lots.
Yeah, we're. It, it's one application. You'd have to.
Yeah, you have to make it for, you have to add them all up and, and I think you use the gross area to be, you know, include streets and everything.
So we get the paper streets to prove it.
Yeah, I would interpret that. Obviously, the vacations are requiring approval.
Well, let's put this cul-de-sac off the property though.
That's in the right of way.
It's already there?
Mm-hmm.
Terry, what does this mean?
What does what?
This little, looks like this.
Four acre.
About seventeen units per acre, specific condition of B five A, that's.
Or is that a life?
No.
Like, uh, that's a look.
No, that's a monitoring law. Or soil board, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's a soil board.
Has S B on there.
Okay, that's just, yeah, that's just like a symbol.
Mm-hmm.
So how do we, um, you know, just get that calculation to Terry because? And these are duplexes with basements, so there's a density count for each housing.
Yeah, twenty-nine. We have twenty-nine units. We have twenty-nine buildings. Uh, we, um, double that, puts us at fifty-eight. We're allowed sixty-seven.
Does that count the basement units?
Yes, including all basement units.
So every household, every mailbox is sixty-eight?
So what's the size of the property, including the railways? Four acres?
It's, uh, three point nine nine hundred acres.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that includes, that includes the paper streets.
Just provide that analysis to Terry.
Okay.
You know, as like a, I don't know what you'd call it. So put, put that on the density for, on the zoning table or something.
And then are, are, are there comments which are highlighted? Section four, um, obviously, the vacations of the portions of ferry do, we understand to be obtained. Uh, road design, we have to be, are, are SIs compliant? Uh, existing overlap, um, okay, Dave's saying it's been addressed. And then we just talked about density.
Right.
Do you have any other comments or questions on the rest of the plan?
I'm not going to know.
Okay.
I think we're all set. We're, um, we're, we're just, we're doing sidewalks. We didn't have to go out into the.
Yeah.
Have into the other paper streets because I don't, that, that could be temporary, because that's.
So you're going to get us a traffic study. You'll get us copies of the wetlands investigations. Um, and then you're seeking a waiver, um, for architectural drawings for townhomes?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, that's something the board will have to consider.
Yes.
That's all I have.
October seventeenth? Plans by September twenty-fifth?
Yep.
You?
That's great.
Thanks. What happened?
What's the last one?
The last one, oh, is Z D of nine? Uh, what's the?
Nothing. I have nothing. Izzy. I saw that.
Somebody had trouble with their running around?
Actually.
Right?
Oh, all right, so John, this one is interesting. This is a duplex that exists on two separate lots that wants to consolidate and put one shared house of worship in their basement.
Oh, yeah, I remember this. This is a little unusual.
Right.
So I assume lot consolidation, that's the condition of approval?
Um, yes, they would, that's not a problem. Consolidated, turn it back into a, a real, a real duplex. Yeah, right. Call it a real duplex. But a duplex on a single lot with a synagogue.
Yeah, our, I, from what I remember, I'll look at this in a minute. Finish this one. Personally, uh, you need the parameter buffer because of the change of use. The buffer comes into play. Um, a couple waivers, which are standard for change of use.
Is this in the Oak Street corner?
Is this in the Oak Street corner?
No, it's on, it's on the, it's closed. It's actually on the North Street Oaks, North Side Oak Street.
Thank you.
We, we had a couple issues with regard to, um, handicap accessibility. We assume this is the surface level access for someone. So we would need pedestrian, obviously.
Yes.
And then, uh, once we're the architect, he's showing the basement door opening up in the pathway.
Yes.
Which I, you know, it's not a heavy lift, but he should tweak that.
Well, that may be, we may just be missing a line. That could be as much as we don't have a line there where there's a break in the grade. We didn't show our grade breaks over here either.
All right.
We'll check that. I, I have a, just, you know, I go through this all the time. The architect.
You get the last one.
No, no, they just give us, oh, we need a ramp. And they figure it'll be this much. And, and I, you know, this is a, this is an existing building. So, you know, we need to go out and just shoot the ground and see what the, they may have, they may have fifty percent more handicap ramp than we need. They may have fifty percent less than we need. And I run into it all the time. It's just, we'll take care of it. It's not a problem. We make it work.
Just, um. Just get the information.
Yep. But, yeah, we, we'll show some type of sidewalk out to the main walkways. If people aren't walking across the lawn, we'll adjust buffering.
Okay. Spook up the plans and resubmit, is the plan, I guess?
You bet.
Okay.